I would assume that to be included under that because we all, we all have. Yeah, if they live with you, it's the same thing in my mind.
Okay, we just change. This is Jenkins, can we change that from childcare to family members maybe?
I don't know, we need to revoke that.
So it's home family care for anybody.
Okay. So we want to go back and you remember how well stated we did that in four doors and can you put in that wording?
Sure, the wording is essentially that we are going to compensate all of employees for time they take off for illness, home care for family members, and without penalizing on sick days.
Sick days or vacation until, until we get some.
Until the, until the governor releases all restrictions on travel and meetings.
Okay, all right, we're gonna do another roll call.
Can we check, before we do the roll call, we're saying the governor, we're saying we'll wait for approval from the governor?
Well, no, the government, if the governor, he pulls out all these, these rules and lets, lets us go back to normal, at that time, then all this, this ceases.
Yeah, my concern was the word governor. Could we, I would think that maybe a better term would be government, which would include the governor or anybody above him.
That's fine.
So if it comes down from DC.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna change that by suggesting the attorney, change that until what we say, release.
You're fading out, I could, fading out, I couldn't hear you.
Okay. Hold on, hold on, I'm getting, getting here. Here, here it is. It would be, so the governor releases us requirement to the comply with the executive order in response to COVID-19. That's executive order number eight issued, and it's issued on March 20th, 2020.
Okay.
All right, so we are going to have roll call please.
Are Winnie and Carol first, motion and second?
Yes.
Okay, let's go with Jenkins.
Yes.
John, Johnson.
Yes.
Winnie.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Gail.
Yes.
All right. Back to number three, procedure for employees needing time off lack of children, childcare to include how they are paid. Is there limited how many days total per week or who is a qualifying person?
I think we just handled that.
We just did that.
So you add your phone that right in as number two, okay, good, then we will go to number four.
And that one we already did.
Took care of that one too.
Okay, good. Approve on number five, approve the public viewing of the proposed budget. It will be published in the paper on the 25th. So what we need is, we needed a motion and a second to approve the public viewing of the proposed budget.
Charlie make a motion.
Charlie.
Charlie.
Johnson approves for second.
Second. All right, any discussion?
Yeah, well, I have a question for Wilbert.
Yes.
Did you get, you and I looked at the police departments, but did you get to look at the water and the Jody's and Admins?
Uh, no, no, I didn't. Matter of fact, I just pulled it up on my, on my computer today. But I hadn't looked at it yet. And I think, Paul, you said that yesterday?
Yeah, I'm, for when I sent it.
Are we gonna have a meeting on Monday, Rich?
Certainly, on the 30th?
Yeah, well, this coming, whatever our next schedule is.
It's April.
Okay, our next schedule will be the 23rd, Monday, the 30th is, is off Monday. And I was considering that we would not have it on the 23rd, given our emergency meeting after day, but instead have, have on that off Monday, have it Monday on the 30th. Your thoughts? I'll be, I'll do whatever you guys.
Okay, here, here's the problem, that's gotta be, an agenda's gotta be put up and made by some of the cops tonight.
Oh, so, okay, scratch that idea, let's go for the 30th, how about that?
Well, does that give us enough time, Paul, to publish it to the public?
I, can you hear me? I was on mute, I can't see where it's at.
I hear ya.
Okay, so, so here's, here's what's going on. So remember, this is for public viewing only. So if we wait until the 30th, we have to, that's a Monday, so I need to have something ready for the paper two days later for that Wednesday printing, to let them know it's gonna be public and viewable for 10 business days. So we'll exclude the next meeting probably for a public hearing. So that means the last full council meeting in April is the moment of truth. And I use that as a buffer zone, so now we're gonna, that's gonna be used up, which is fine. It just means if it doesn't work out in the second meeting in April, that we'd have to have a special meeting just for that purpose, but you know one thing, and Mr. Jenkins, I saw that it was set last night. But the one thing is, is Rich, you'd, or Rick, you'd ask about risk management or something about different budgets? You were asking about?
Yes, we had that under, we're gonna put that on a budget for a non-home rule sales tax.
So, so the one thing you guys need to understand, there's, there's truly two accounts where money's drawn from. You've got the enterprise fund, which is water and sewer, and you have the general fund, which is comprised of sales tax, non-home rule municipal utility tax. That's all called general fund. So really, you don't have to dedicate, that would be an accounting issue, not a, not a budget issue. So you don't want to dedicate each line item to come out of a certain fund, because if you do this one, you need to do all of them. I suggest, and I know with the new law coming out January 1 of 21, how it can or cannot be spent. I think this is acceptable, but I think we shouldn't just say, hey, let's take it out of their budget, because we need to have it in that line item. And when that's paid for that specific check, when that comes due for risk management contribution, and that can be paid out of non-home rule sales tax. I think that's the best way to do it, is to keep it in everybody's line item.
Well, when we, we talked to the auditors, they thought that our plan had merits.
Yeah, I actually talked to Kevin on Friday morning, and he said the same thing. He said the biggest thing is, you, you need to follow it, and it's been in the city budget for years. It's, there's no change whatsoever. I mean, there's really no change whatsoever, so.
Well, this is the plan to alleviate the problem of having to transfer monies out of non-home rule sales tax, which you said has up 2021 will not be allowed. Rather than enter into that discussion whether, whether that's the way it's gonna be or not, the way we're doing it here eliminates that as being an issue. So we're trying to prevent the idea of having to transfer money for payroll from one account to the other, and this seems like a logical way to do it, where we don't have to be calling up and asking about transferring money from one account to another.
Well, so, so the reason why non-home rule sales tax was used or on occasion was to, to make payroll. The risk management contribution could fit in with the very reason why non-home rule sales tax exists. That needs to be a definition, that would be one thing, but be directly coming from the non-home rule sales tax. And, you know, transferring money is, is a part of business and, you know, the accounting cycle. But I, I still think it should be a line item, and we need to know that, hey, this is what some, so spending for risk management for their department should have no bearing on a negative or positive. If, you know, if their risk management goes up a lot because of a certain reason, that's, that's just the fiscal process. I, I just think we need to follow the money to be able to, to see where it's at. That's why the non-home rule sales tax is a separate account at the bank. So we know exactly what's in it at any given time if we look at the online account. But I, I don't think it's gonna change anything. It's, it's not gonna benefit the city, it's not gonna hurt us. It's just something that, that we can pay out of non-home rule sales tax, and, and that's where Michelle can pull the money from.
Well, Paul, the reason that we looked at doing it this way is simply, as you said, we won't be able to take money out of non-home rule sales tax to meet payroll requirements. And now it seems to me like you're, you're saying that, well, that's gonna be okay, but only for a year. Why aren't we solving this now?
Well, so payroll, that's one thing, but risk management, we guess the big definition is, does risk management contribution construe as payroll? If it does, then you can't use non-home rule sales tax for that either.
Well, it's not construed as payroll. We, we checked, and it's a part of, of infrastructure. It's a, it's a cost to do business.
I, I, you sort of broke up.
I said it's, it's, it's included like an infrastructure item because it's a cost of doing business. It's building insurance, it's, it's liability insurance, it's all of those things. It's, it's an absolute need, and it is not limited under non-home rule sales tax. Like you're saying, that switching money for payroll purposes is an issue.
Yeah, I mean, if, if risk contribution is, is, is part of doing business, and, and the council feels that it's not a salary, which it isn't, then that would be, that should fit into the non-home rule sales tax. It just can't be used for things that wasn't approved for in April of 2013. And it, it seems like the risk contribution should fit in there. Salary's not, obviously, but risk contribution, I don't know the actual definition and what the true background of that is. But it sounds like it does fit in, you know, it's relevant to the non-home.
We did review that, Paul, and, and what we did is we took the amount that is being normally transferred our non-home rule sales tax into the general fund to make, to meet payroll needs. And we found that the amount paid for risk insurance offsets that amount. So this, by doing it this way, we eliminate having to do transfers that what you say is next year will, in, in 2021 will not be allowed anyway. So in our simple thinking here was that we do this, and we've, we've eliminated the need, not saying if things can go awry, we might have to transfer some, but we released out of that fund, we should be okay without having to take money out of that fund for payroll.
Is Michelle on the call? Is Michelle on the call?
No.
So, so all she'll need to do is just pay when the, when that risk management bill comes in. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, is it twice a year or just once a year? Is it?
No, it's, it's broken up, partly you have a down payment of, of X percentage, I think it's 25%, and then balance is paid in nine months. We've actually, Paul, been paying some of those bills out of the non-home rule sales tax, thus reducing some of the monies that we've had to transfer into the payroll account.
Rich, can I make a comment?
Yes.
You're, you're, I think you're talking apples and oranges. We're, we're talking about a budget. And if you want to put risk management down in a budget, then the budgeting process allows us to better look at where our money is coming from. We're not talking about how Michelle pays the bill. We're talking about knowing where our money goes from. So if we want to look at that risk management as a budget, so that we know how much money is coming, where, you know, where we stand throughout the year, then we should do that. It's gonna give us a better understanding of it, not how it's actually paid. Am I, am I missing something?
Well, so Rick, the one thing is though, and Rich, correct me if I'm wrong. Rick, I understand exactly what you mean. So Rich, what, what I think Rick is trying to say is, on the, we want to have a trend, so we know the analysis for each 12, each of the months for the fiscal year on that line item. That can be paid if, I don't know who can actually say, hey, look, it's fine or legal to pay that, because it's construed as what this was, referendum was in 13, April 13. All we have to do is get a check, we get a bill for $30,000 for something, Rich, and it's relevant to risk management. That non-home rule sales tax can go right to there. She can use the checkbook or however she pays that. It's gonna free up general fund, we won't have to borrow money for payroll. It's the same thing, it's just an accounting process versus an audit process, I'm sorry, versus a budget process. We really want the budget to depict what's going, and then it's just gonna come from non-home rule sales tax. If, you know, our attorneys or somebody says, hey, it's fine, I don't care either way. I think it's a good idea to go ahead and just write the check for non-home rule sales tax to pay the entire amount that we can afford through that for management.
Well, it seems to me like we're in agreement. I don't know. I don't understand what we're, I'm not disagreeing on, on any of that. I, I've done the exact what we worked out, what we thought would be the best plan, so that we didn't have to transfer money out of non-home rule sales tax into the general fund to make payroll. And this is the plan that we came up with. If also, our finance committee thinks that there's a different way, a better way to do it, or we just keep doing like we have done, and we'll worry in 2021 about the fact that we can't pay, transfer money for payroll. We'll have to figure something else out. That, that's your call, guys. We, we, all we did is we thought we were doing what was the right thing, tried to bring, bring up a plan to you guys that makes sense and eliminates the need for us to transfer monies to meet payroll.
I, I think it's gonna work out. I think as long as we use the non-home rule sales tax to pay for any type of infrastructure, and if it is relevant to this on the risk management, I think it's gonna work out fine where, where it's being spent properly, and it's gonna free up general fund. And we should not, or at least a lot less, move money for payroll. I believe it's gonna help out.
That's exactly what we were thinking, so that's, okay.
And that's what's in the budget.
So the bottom line is, we still need time to look at the budget that we haven't been able to see.
Well, I mean, that's up to you guys. I mean, I, I know I did send it out late. Actually, I got some late numbers in. Yeah, I sent it out, it was at 8:02 last night, so unless you guys are waiting for it and work till 2:00 AM, you're not prepared. But if that's the case, then I'm gonna have to get John Long to change. We're gonna have to change some things that's gonna go into the paper. I had something prepared for the paper already, just so we wouldn't miss it. So guys, wanna be corrected then, or I wanna know what's going on is so, not this Monday, but next Monday, which is, what is it, the 30th?
Yes, it's 30th.
That's a buffer, that's a fifth Monday, so that's gonna be construed as the actual second, or the council meeting for the budget to go over, for you guys to give you a week to look it over. Then, two days later, I'm gonna say that it's gonna be in the paper for 10 business days to be reviewed. And I'm trying to add that as I'm looking at right now at the calendar. It looks like we can do it. Actually, it looks like we can go 10 business days, because the 13th of April is the first of two city council meetings in April. So we legitimately can still use that first, that first meeting. So we'll still have the second meeting buffer.
So we will have a meeting on March 30th. A, a regular council meeting, and I assume that we're still gonna have to do it the same, the same way we're doing this today. And then we will, and we all have everything together then for our, for 13 council meeting. Does that be, will be okay with that?
So, so the, yeah, so Wednesday would be the first, which would be in the paper on April 1st. It's supposed to sit and be ready or able to be viewed for 10 business, or just 10 calendar days.
Yes.
We're shut down at City Hall. John Long said you will need to print the budget and tape it to the window, and we can have it available online.
Okay.
And then three days later, which is Monday, the 13th, we legitimately can go over the budget. We can have the public hearing at 6:45, and we can approve the budget through finance or for the treasury report. So we still have that extra Monday meeting on the, on the 27th. It'd be, I just need to make sure I get it to the courthouse and sign within a timely manner, because that will be very close at the end of month.
Yeah, we, we make sure it gets done there. If you're not available, Paul, I'll make sure it gets done there.
And I'll send John an email to confirm this is all fine on the dates, and I'll get back with you. The other thing John did mention, that, and, and since you guys are eight, committee as a whole is eight. That means that I legitimately could sit down with two of you and go over the budget with you, each, you know, in four different groups. So if that's the case next week, sanitize yourself and I will meet you at City Hall.
Okay, sounds good to me. As of right now, we're gonna have a, a meeting on, on the March 30th. And we're gonna do it the same way that we're doing this meeting today. And then we'll look to put the budget in the window and in the paper on March, on April 1st. And we'll tape it through the window here, and then April 13th, we'll have our vote. Is that, is that what everyone understands is agreeable to?
Well, yes, except the budget won't be in the paper, the actual announcement of the budget will, because I don't wanna.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
I do have a question for George. Is the meeting on the 30th gonna have the same meeting number and password?
No.
Okay.
It'll be set up. It can. It can have the same meeting number and password. These are, don't, these don't stay out that, all that long, so I'll, I'll create a new meeting number. And there's no need for a password. Usually, I don't think anybody had to put in a password.
Nope.
You did?
I did.
Yeah.
Are you?
I did often.
I'll set it off, I'll set it up so it doesn't require a password. You know, just, you just need the meeting number to get in. There's, there's one box I could uncheck.
Hey, George.
Yes.
So when I called in, I just knew you needed the phone number to call, and then they asked for a meeting ID number.
Meeting ID number, that's all you need, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't have to use the password.
Right, and if you look at the link that I send, the click on that meeting ID number is embedded in that link, so you shouldn't have to do it then.
Yeah.
What we will do too is, those members that weren't at today's meeting, those that have the electronic capacity to, 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 to do this remote, I don't think Mr. Mack necessarily has that. So we will contact him, and then he can be present up here. And that, that, that way everything's working, we should have a full council. Does that sound reasonable?
Sounds good.
Sounds good. So is anything going in the budget, in the paper on the 25th about the budget?
Uh, can you repeat that?
Yes, this is Charlie. I said, is anything going in the paper on the 25th now then, or are we gonna wait?
Uh, so I have an email to David Porter to do that, and that was prior to this meeting. So I'm gonna email him as we speak to pull that, and, because we'll have to change the date. So there's nothing that should be in the paper unless it's the David's error, because I'm gonna contact him right after we hang up. I might even text him now, so.
Okay.
Yeah, the 25th.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
Okay, are we good on number five then? Do we move to number six?
Yes.
All right, number six, approve the contract with PWM to do the engineering for the CDBG. Penny, what do you, you got anything to say on that?
I forwarded that on to Luanne. She has a contract, I actually cannot see it right now, because I'm using the plant computer to see you all. So the contract should be with Luanne.
Okay.
And this is for the project, this is for the project at Belleville and 50. And that is the one that was approved by the special.
The way that you guys did.
Yes, so the money is approved by the, the county right now, but we have not got the word back from them. So this would be contingent upon getting that word back from the county then.
Okay, all right, Luanne found it, and I'll read the heading on it.
You can actually display it, if it's on a computer.
Well, we, we have a paper copy.
Okay, if you have things as a document, down at the bottom of the screen, you'll see a little box that says share. You click on share, then you open that document, and it comes up.
Okay, I'm on my laptop, because none of the ones here in the office has a, a camera.
Okay, well, you're not using it anyway, but that's fine.
We set this up and we're on a different one, so.
All right.
Remember, this, this, uh, this grant that we have is from intergovernmental grants, and it is to, it's the owner's project, it is to Belleville Street, US 50 Water Main Replacement Project. And the, that is what, first we were told, and we were denied, and Penny went and did the appropriate survey, that, then she submitted, and then she got approval for this grant.
Yes, and this, this contract here is just for the engineering of that, which we don't normally include the engineering into the grant, so that we can do a bigger project, just pay for the, the engineering ourselves. That is what that contract is for.
Okay. All right, so this is for interesting, I mean, engineering. And I have here down here a lump sum amount of $23,698. Penny, is that right?
Yeah, there should have been two amounts on there, one for.
Boundary and photography, $4,396, and one for base civil engineering design services, $13,298.
That is correct.
Then we have legal description for easements, application permits and review, construction administrative services. So the proposal is $23,698. Correct?
That is correct.
All right, so now, is that, is that money a part of the grant, or is that money that we generally normally pay ourselves?
That money would come out of the engineering line item in the budget for the upcoming year.
Okay. All right, so what we need is a motion and a second to approve the PWM engineering agreement. So it's called the short form of agreement between owner and engineer for professional services, water infrastructure services. All right.
We'll make a motion that we approve the contract.
This is Charlie, I'll second it.
All right, a second. All right, any, any discussion?
No.
If no discussion, then we shall have roll call please.
Okay, Winnie.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Gail.
Yes.
Jen, Jenkins.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Motion approved. All right, number seven, discuss and approve COVID-19 process procedures. We'll have the clerk give an overview of the procedures that we are implementing here at Admins and throughout.
Okay, first of all, time cards need to be filled out daily, and along with the white dated timesheet, it's turned in by Monday mornings that, to Michelle. She needs them to be able to do her thing on Tuesday, so people get paid. In the event of a shutdown, Michelle will do the time cards from home. She has set up ADP on her home computer. Trish will need the hours sent to her by email, so she can split the hours into water, sewer, street and cemetery. And we're staggering when people are working here at the main office. Trish will be working in the morning. Michelle will be working in the afternoons when they are going to be here. Katie has, our part-timer, has been sent home with work, so she can work at home. And I'll keep her up to date on that. I'm gonna be in first thing in the morning to open up, sanitize, make sure that the guys. to, um, open up, sanitize, make sure that the guys, uh, from water and sewer, I can tell them anything they need to know, uh, for their daily work. The one thing that, um, the people up here were concerned about is that how are we going to, um, handle the vacation that, um, obviously, we are going to be running out of time. April is our last, and, and we can't take off the end of April for any vacation, because we all have, uh, you know, end of the year things to do. So they were concerned with, um, how that, uh, could we roll some of our vacation over into the next year? That was, yeah.
In my opinion.
That is a concern of mine as well.
In my opinion, I think we should, in my opinion, I think we should roll the, roll vacation over to be, to the next year, as long as they use it in the next year.
I would agree. We'll do it at one time because of the COVID.
Yeah, okay.
Due to the fact that it's, uh, under this seven, which is said, discuss and prove COVID-19 process procedures. Um, Don, do you feel that, that we're okay to vote on that?
I think so, because it's, uh, part of the process.
Okay, so, uh, someone out there, please think their idea of how we should, we should, uh, place, put this motion into effect.
Okay, I move that due to the COVID emergency, that employees be permitted to roll over vacation hours for days uh, to the next fiscal year, as long as they are used in the next fiscal year.
Okay, here, uh, move over to next year. Okay, okay, uh, so George, I assume that, that you're making that motion now?
Yes.
Second.
I would second it and just state vacation slash personal days.
I agree.
All right, we got a second for Rick, so here's what we have. Uh, the motion is that, uh, on the reasoning of, of the COVID emergency, uh, the city allows, uh, employees to roll over vacation slash, uh, personal days to next fiscal year on condition that they must be used within that fiscal year. Is that correct?
Sounds correct.
Then it sounds correct, and.
All right, very good, then.
But the following year's vacation has to be used also.
Right, they have to use all the vacation days.
Right, so we're not going to keep rolling it the following year.
Yeah, okay, on, on condition that all, okay.
Well, you are allowed to roll over 40.
Yes, but.
I believe, normal procedure.
But, but we're saying this time, we're going to allow more than that one time.
They cannot roll, any days that they roll over from this fiscal year to next fiscal year, uh, they, they have to use those first.
Correct.
Okay, okay, all right. Then we shall have roll call, please.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Witty?
Yes.
On that, um, okay, now, um, somebody wrote, what is the next step if someone in the community tests positive? Are we to continue to come in on all the same schedule, or do we, or, or do we do a stagger schedule? Well, we had planned on doing it, so I assume that is okay. Is that agreeable, that our stagger is okay?
Yes.
Okay. We just kind of told you what we're going to do, but I guess we should have asked permission, I'm sorry.
The, the only thing that I would add, Luanne, is, um, I mean, I, I, I look at Penny's plan that she has laid out.
Uh-huh.
From the streets department, I know there was an issue with getting a hold of who is actually covering. We need from Jody, an actual plan as to who is covering.
Okay.
Rich, can you help work on that?
Absolutely.
Okay, then the last thing is Michelle wanted to know. She wrote, can I put out the invoices without signatures once a week and send checks that need paid besides the recurring invoices? The checks would be sent in a timely manner, so as not to incur late fees.
It would be my recommendation to, uh, during these trying times, to, uh, allow, uh, Michelle the, uh, ability to do what she feels is necessary to, to protect the financial interests of the city. And if that means she needs to do something to, uh, make sure we don't get any late fees, that she do it.
We need to trust her.
She was thinking that, uh, she could get four people to sign, and that's great, but if it's not able to, I think she just feels like she needs some direction from you.
I think we need to trust Michelle's judgment on the bills to be paid, so that they're paid.
Very good.
Yes, I would agree. It needs to pay stuff on time.
Okay, I, I have one last statement I made. There's been a question come up of why the ambulance has been put outside of the, uh, outside of the city hall. And, uh, it's because of, of the division of labor from the water sewer department. Uh, part of the water sewer department is going to be occupying the, uh, old fire department area. And, uh, as I've been explaining to by, by Penny, and Penny, you correctly, my mom here, but the Illinois EPA has said that, uh, the only people can be in that space out there are water sewer personnel. Thus, we were, we were forced to tell the ambulance group that they could not use that bathroom in that area, nor could they store the vehicle in there, uh, until further notice, uh, they must keep the vehicle and themselves outside of our area. They're restricted to only their, their, uh, living quarters, uh, at the south end of the building. Penny, did I say that correctly?
That is correct. I had him, had a phone conversation with EPA on Friday, presented my plan to them, told them exactly how I would be dividing my crew, um, was, uh, basically told that that was a good idea to divide them like we had and still keep a crew here. Um, we obviously have to have crew to continue on the water department and the sewer department through all of this, so I can't just have people at home unless they are sick. Um, we thought that this would be the best way to keep everyone safe and still have a crew available. Um, if one crew was to get sick and have the least people impacted.
Uh, that, that was for informational purposes only. We've already, uh, given the ambulance service the edict that they have, uh, have to stay outside, and I noticed that the ambulance is outside, so it seems like they're agreed to. Penny's, all right, clerk, just one more thing.
Okay, um, with our staggeredness up here, my times will be kind of weird, because I will probably come in early, pop in after Michelle leaves, and do some work, so don't, don't, don't be surprised to see me up here at a weird time. End of state.
All right, if there's nothing else, anyone else have anything that they want to say?
Yeah, one quick one, there's a, there was a human error in the recording, and we missed the first 20 minutes of recording. So as soon as we're finished, I'm just going to pause the recording, and I'm going to do a synopsis of the action on the first three items, to make sure that anybody who's watching this from the public will know those first three items were covered somewhere.
Okay, I was going to say, I made a hand.
Right, you've got the minute, the official minutes, but this is for the public, if anybody. And so I'll, I'm going to do a synopsis at the end that I'm going to add on, go down through that agenda, and I'll just do it from here. Uh, you all don't need to do anything.
Okay, thanks, George. Uh, then, uh, I guess if you will all in unison say aye to the.
Rich, I got one question for you. George, you had put an email out about whether we need to purchase a license as a city for this?
If we, if we're going to be doing this, even on an occasional basis or an emergency basis, it might be wise to have a license. Uh, the various companies are all priced about the same. The, the, this one here, Zoom, is $14.99, $14.99 a month. It allows for unlimited meetings and no more than 100 participants, and only one host. So only one person would have the legal ability to log into the system. Now, if the login was shared, uh, that's another thing. But it, it goes by email address. The next system up would be, because there's a 10 license, a 10 host minimum, would be $199 a month. And that would allow for up to 300 participants on unlimited meetings, but then 10 individuals would be able to. Any, any one of 10 people could, uh, host or turn on the system to have a meeting. Uh, that's something we have to think about for a budget down the road, maybe the next meeting discuss it further. And I can email you all, uh, information on this one and a couple others. The free systems have some weaknesses in that they limit the participants, they limit the amount of time you're on the air, and their quality is not as good.
George?
Yeah.
We, we also would need to have a ordinance stating that we can have electronically remote meetings.
Right.
So that would have to be prepared and.
We would have to do all of that probably at the same time, if we decide to move forward and approve having our own, uh, web conference capability. We'll need to do that, because if the law reverts back, uh, we must still have a quorum physically present under the law as it's written. It's been waived right now. But it would allow, for example, if one or two of us were not able to physically attend the meeting, uh, if we had the license, we could at least attend the meeting, uh, by, uh, distance technology. Oh, I see that Paul's discovered the background switch, so, yeah, we can do different backgrounds. But, uh, that would be something I'm, I will recommend and bring up at the next finance committee meeting. And, uh, I think it would be finance, or would it be property? It's one of two things, it's spending money and it's buying a license.
And George, the best thing to do is some of, some of the video, I do, I do about five or 10 of these a week for work. And some of the video, if we need video, the resolution's bad on some cameras, I think it may be the lighting. The other thing is on voice, I recommend what George is doing. I don't know if I'm muffled now, but the headset works great. Pardon me?
I said, no, you're good.
Okay, yeah, some people come in a little muffled, and if this is for official use, I would definitely recommend using a headset.
Right, and, and you can use iPhone, uh, earbuds that have a mic on it, because most of your computers have a jack for that. I occasionally use my i, my earbuds, and they do, they work just as well sometimes, most of the time. But the headphones, mine, this is a, if you're going to do a headphone, depends how much you're going to do. I, but, the iBuds, the earbuds work fine, uh, but this is like an $80 headphone, it's high quality.
All right, if there is nothing, um, where do we go, I'll accept the motion to, to, uh, convene and, uh.
I'll move, we adjourn.
Adjourn, yeah.
Second.
All those, uh, improve, I guess, sign off.
All right, thanks. I'm not going to sign off, I'm just going to pause it.
Should we do a roll call?
Roll call sounds good.
Okay. Gail?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Witty?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Adios amigos.
Okay, Penny, I signed the papers.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.